Stand and have a moment of silence on the placement plaque, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We're going to call the meeting to order for the purposes of reorganization. In the first order, there is the election of temporary president. Do you have any nominations for temporary president? Can I talk Kennedy?
Second.
All right. You can have one. Any other nominations, not mere data motion to close nominations?
I nominate to close.
Second to that?
Second.
All in favor of the motion to close nomination, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then we'll just have a voice vote for Mr. Kennedy for temporary president. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that carries. Okay, so we have that and then.
So I'll ask you to do the o's. To the incoming elected school board members.
These are an alphabetical order and I ask Mr. DiCucciio to please stand with his right hand and repeat after me. I, Jennifer DiCucciio.
I, Jennifer DiCucciio.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this commonwealth.
And Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity. Congrats. Did your honor have one last? Miller. Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please? I, Justin Miller.
I, Justin Miller.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
Support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this commonwealth.
And Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Okay, repeat after me, please. I, Leanne Reiner.
I, Leanne Reiner.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this commonwealth.
And Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Turner, can you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please? I, Nicole Turner.
I, Nicole Turner.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
So can I have an official roll call then?
Mr. DiCucciio?
Present.
Mr. DePretis?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Ms. Lance?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Reiner?
Here.
Ms. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Wick?
Here.
That's nine present, zero absent.
Thank you. Great to have my two elected members in the room, so moving forward. Mr. Math, would you want to carry reorganization first? Oh, okay, can I have a?
No, I'm sorry. So what we do is we have the election of officers. We have the president, the vice president, treasurer. And again, these positions do not require a second. So I'll open the floor to nominations for the president for one year.
Nominate Tom Kennedy.
Any other nominations? Do you disclose nominations? Second to that motion?
Megan's second.
All in favor of the motion to close, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll have a roll call vote for Mr. Kennedy for president for one year.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. DiCucciio?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
That's nine yes.
Next, we'll entertain nominations for vice president for one year. I'll nominate Sally Wick.
Motion to close nominations.
All in favor of the motion to close, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, we'll have a roll call vote for Mrs. Wick for vice president for one year.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. DiCucciio?
Yes.
Mr. DePretis?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
That's nine yes.
Okay, last we'll have. Open the floor for nominations for treasurer for one year.
I nominate Anthony DePretis. Move to close nominations.
Second. All in favor of the motion to close nomination, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, we'll have a roll call votes for Mr. Press for treasurer for one year.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. DiCucciio?
Yes.
Mr. DePretis?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
That's nine yes.
Okay, time to be over to you, Mr. Kennedy.
Can I have a motion? For the appointment of the Morris Foundation Board, Kevin Hagan and Leanne Reiner can have a motion.
Megan's second. Sally's second.
Have a first and a second. I need to do a roll call, so.
You do it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? Kevin and Leanne, welcome to the Penn Foundation. Kevin, that's your second or third time. For the alternate, for the Penn Foundation, Jim DiCucciio. Have a first and a second.
Lou.
Right here.
So have a first and a second, any comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? That passes for the BoTech. Justin Miller? Have a first and a second.
Lou.
Second.
So I have any? Or discussion?
Yeah, for the press for Sally like that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? That passes. And the alternate, Anthony DePretis?
I'll motion.
Right here.
For discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Nicole first. Sorry, I just got in here. It's hard not to know, I guess, mission. So that passes. Moving on to establish the calendar for 2022. It's like January 4th, January 11th, February 1st, February 8th, March 1st, March 8th, April 5th, April 12th, May 3rd, May 10th, June 7th, June 14th, July 19th, August 2nd, August 9th, September 6th, September 13th, October 4th, November 14th, November 1st, November 9th, December 6th, but finance meeting at 6 o'clock, February 8th, March 3rd, and April 12th. Have a first and a second?
Kevin, so Lou.
Megan's second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
That is the calendar for next year. So this was the reorganization meeting, can I have a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting?
Megan's second.
Kevin, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The reorganization meeting is now adjourned. And we don't need a closed session between, correct?
No.
So I'm going to call the board meeting to order for the monthly meeting. Call it to order, can I have a roll call for the monthly meeting?
Mr. DiCucciio?
Here.
Mr. DePretis?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Ms. Lance?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Reiner?
Yeah.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Here.
That's nine present.
Thank you. Board reports, foundation. Kevin, did you have something?
Yeah, yes, very briefly. We last met here in this room on November 16th, 2021, but we will not have a meeting in December. There was a structural change approved at the last foundation meeting, which actually led to change in appointments here for two board members, but school board members that are active at one alternate. And as a result of that change, there will be two community seats open effective in January. So if you are out there that's interested in joining the foundation, please come on meeting in January, which will be January 18th.
Thank you. Anthony, you didn't have one for the BoTech, as an old man, so I second, I didn't know. So next month, Mr. Miller will have a, they have a board report for the BoTech. Any other board reports, we didn't have a. This one, a second. So no other board reports. My long awaited student council. So if you guys want to have a report, you can stand up there, stand up here closer to the microphone, however you want to do it.
I'm looking for Gobill. And then I'm Riley Conley, as you said, we're the new school, oh, student reps. Just, we're just going to inform you about something that's going on. Sorry about all the technical difficulties last meeting, but in October, we hosted the trick or treat night where all of them from our community come around and the kids, we did a drive-through again. Since nobody packed and had inside, that went really well, really smoothly, and I really think all the kids in our community really enjoyed it.
And currently, we're working on in high school, a door decorating and food collection competition between homerooms. So there's like prizes for whoever has the most creative door decorations and also who can collect the most food. Who is going to the secret food pantry. And promoting the last week before break for who has the coolest homeroom and that homeroom gets a donut party and then whoever has the most donations and coolest floor gets like free coffee.
Just to add some fun to our school. That's the only thing we have, thank you guys. Thank you.
Moving on the agenda, we come to public comment, agenda items only. Is there anyone in the room that has a public comment for agenda item? Seeing none, I'll go to the zoom. Is there anyone with public comment for agenda item only? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to have public comment on agenda item only at this point? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. To approve the minutes, November 3rd and 9th.
Megan's second, Sally's second.
For discussion, board comments? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? So that passes. Before I get too awful far into this, I forgot my, we had a closed session December 1st for personnel and we also had a session prior to this meeting for personnel leaving. It was December 1st, correct?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to main agenda, under personnel, can I have a motions for numbers one through five?
I move, Nicole.
Kevin, second.
So first and second, board discussion, comments? Yeah, for discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? That passes on the main agenda, under personnel's numbers six through eight, number first and second?
Kevin's second.
Justin's second.
Yeah, can I have a roll call, please?
Do you want board discussion first?
Oops, excuse me. Yeah, for discussion, comments?
This is Megan, I certainly appreciate the fans, they're super important, I should give everyone, I want to take my kids to school. I definitely believe they deserve a pay increase, I'm very grateful for the really important work you do. I have some potential to provide some way which changes in the contract, so I'll be going in that's.
Any other board discussion, comments? A roll call, please?
Mr. DePretis?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. DiCucciio?
Yes.
So that's eight yes and one no.
So that passes. Under personnel's numbers nine through 13, can I have a first and a second?
Megan's second.
Nicole's second.
For discussion, comments? Sir? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? So that passes. On the main agenda, under finance, can I have a motions for numbers one through 10?
Megan's second.
Justin's second.
For discussion, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? That passes, under the main agenda, under finance, number 11, can I have a first and a second?
Nicole's second.
Megan's second.
Board discussion?
He wasn't going to explain it.
Yeah. Did you want to talk about this?
Yeah, I can talk about this. Okay, this item is in a resolution, each year, the state sets guidelines for the process for the budget for the upcoming school year. And that includes two options that we would have to choose from in February, either prepare preliminary budget or prepare a resolution and approve a resolution not to exceed the index. What that means is, as was on the agenda tonight, the resolution not to exceed the index each year. There's an index that the state sets that, that is the index that each school district has as a limit to how much they could raise any taxes in the district for that given year. So for the 2022 through school year, the index for Marjorie School District is 3.4%, which equates to a maximum of 3.447 mils. That would be the maximum that we could raise if we, if we would need to raise taxes as far as the process, that would be the maximum that we could raise taxes without going over the index. So what this resolution does is that basically limits us. And lets the state know that, you know, if that's needed, that we would not exceed that index. The only way that we could exceed the index would be to try to get an exception, the notes are, once again, there's like various specific things, or then go to the voters, to do a matter of, historically, we have not, I don't think we've ever done quite above the index here at Marjorie's School District. If we were to go to the index, that would bring in roughly, the estimate I have today is about $985,000 in total revenue. So, so this, I'm recommending that we, if the board approves this resolution, and we would put together a budget that would not, would not have any tax increase, but in the event that it would need a tax increase, we could not exceed that index.
So this just opened up the doors if we want, it's not actually raising.
Yeah, now this is actually, it's.
Limiting and raising.
Basically capping it off what we can.
It allows us to go through the normal budget process where we have a preliminary budget made and final in June.
If you understand, somebody would probably vote trying to see that if you knew already that there was some large expenditure that came up that you needed to be able to cover, which there is, there's nothing in our district.
Any other board discussion? Can I roll call, please?
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. DiCucciio?
Yes.
Mr. DePretis?
Yes.
That's nine yes.
Something together, something together, discussion for. Okay, under the main agenda, under personnel's, I have, or excuse me, finding, numbers 12 and number 13, can I have a first and a second?
Kevin, so Lou.
Second.
First and second, board discussion, comments, questions?
Just for clarification purposes, just so the public understands, number 12, it's just for them to obtain specs, any kind of bids, anything like that, it's not to approve anything moving forward, it's just so that they can go out and obtain that information.
That's right, yes, to prove any number that would come in to award a contract. Any other board discussion, comments? A roll call, please?
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Turner? Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. DiCucciio?
Yes.
Mr. DePretis?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
That's nine yes.
So that passes, thank you. So under the main agenda, our programs, numbers one through six, can I have a first and a second?
Megan's second.
Nicole's second.
So I have a first and a second, board questions, comments?
This is Megan, just thanks to the teachers and supervisors, you speech therapists, you special injectors, all kinds of people who are going to be doing extra work to bring in people for you to help reach to them as well as helping us with more help.
Any other board discussion, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? That passed. On the main agenda, under policies, numbers one and two, have a motion? Excuse me, and three. So policies one, two and three?
Nicole.
I'm sorry, I missed you.
Nicole.
Megan's second, thank you.
For discussion, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Under voting, voters and grounds, it's not on the agenda, it's an emergency situation, we need to replace the condenser and evaporator at the high school for a cost of $15,000.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, we have a bid shortly. Under, to be quotes, to be quotes for that?
It will be bid as we call.
So we need to have a motion to replace the, authorize the expenditure of, not to exceed $15,000. Can I have a motion?
Anthony's so moved.
Kevin's second.
So a first and a second. For discussion, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
That passes. Under main agenda, under others, numbers one through three? Have a motion?
Second. I tell.
Kevin's second. So I have a first and a second. Board questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? Did I miss anything on them? Great, moving on, we have public comment at this point, is there anyone in the room that wish to have a public comment? Seeing none, I'll move to the room. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to have a public comment at this point?
No, yes, good.
Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to have a public comment at this point? Seeing none, I'll move on. M A E A, it's a representative from M A E A, you are?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. We would like to, the association would like to send a big congratulations out to our girls soccer team for winning their third state championship. Our elementary students were so excited today to have, to see them when they stopped by during our bus time. And I, we just want our girls to know that your teachers are so proud of you. We're proud of all of your hard work and all your accomplishments. The association would also like to welcome the new board members. We look forward to working with you as we put our students' education first. The association would also like to wish happy holidays to everyone. Our students, teachers and parents are busy planning concerts, parties and holiday themed activities and are looking forward to a much needed break. Happy holidays, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you. Moving on to administration, Dr. Rose?
I echo Sharon's sentiments. I'd also like to welcome our new board members, we're working with you over the next several months and years. And I was going to wish everybody happy holiday, this is our last official board meeting until after the Christmas season. So wishing everybody here, everyone out there, and everyone in our community happy holiday.
Thank you, Dr. McMahon?
Just as I say, in the beginning of the year, we had, back in July, we met with a committee that we met with discussing ester money, which was the monies that we were receiving, we invited government to request more new laws and then through that committee, and it's the community survey, key survey, we came up with the programs to extend the academics after school and we had agreed that committee level to do it for the first semester and then as an administrative team, we kind of took a look at that and then see what we were going to, based on the popular response and how successful it's been, we're going to continue with those extended academics after school. That's grade one through 12, addressing more laws, so on grades one through four, that will be read, after school program read rocks and then, we rock it, and then in the comic club, which is mathematics as well as reading, and then the secondary level, grade seven through 12, I mean math too. So even if students have not participated in that first semester, they are welcome to jump in in the second semester. You're going to take a bit of a breather, a break through the holidays, but then look for information coming after the year, so we serve that back up towards the end of January.
Thank you. I'm Miss Brans, there?
Yeah, I wanted to give an update on the bond refinancing. I took a paper call at the November 9th meeting, the board approved the district to go, for us to go ahead with refunding, refinancing of the 2016 and 2014 series bonds. So that took place the first week of November, or I'm sorry, the last week of November, on November 30th, we went to market. There was, due to the new variant, the new COVID variant, there was significant volatility in the market. So with the plummet in treasury yields, community school years, yields followed. However, not in lockstep, still creating a small window opportunity for deals pricing that week. We were able to reap benefits of the low yield environment and get out, start a supply and follow later in the week. The approach was quite a successful, after over 20 investors came to the table, placing $22.99 in orders, equating to deal being nearly three times oversubscribed, so the amount of that bond issue was eight points, just roughly $8.6 million. So when we originally were given a motion from Alicia back in November, we were looking at local savings of roughly $465,000. The deal ended up coming in at saving of $603,000 in local savings over 15 years, that averages about $40,000 a year of savings. The interest rate went from 2.77 to 1.9, so almost 1%, 87 basis points. So that was closed out, this past week, just got the official statement today, so we were able to see a lot more, quite a bit more, save $138,000 more savings than we were. I have.
That was great news. Thank you. Josh, you're.
I don't have anything, so.
I'm Miss Brans, or, excuse me, Miss Selwyn?
Just again, congratulations to our girls soccer team, it was great to be there in person to see their victory. Our J R O T C had a drill competition this past weekend, had excellent success at that, so congrats to them. And thank you to our student council and our sponsors and advisors for the door decorating and prices, firstly by holiday cheer. Thank you.
Hold on.
Oh yes, just to get you into the holiday spirit, middle school orchestra, seventh grade band, chorus and eighth grade band will be performing in their winter holiday concert Tuesday, December 14th, starting at 6:30 at the high school auditorium. Uh, we have passed the midterm of the second nine weeks, and we'll be sending out notifications to all parents, uh, this Thursday, that they should log into Skyward and check the progress for their son and daughter. And I look forward to working with new board moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holden. Uh, Miss Brass?
Oh, yes, uh, today we successfully uploaded our specialized pen data to the state. Um, this is probably the quickest one since I've been here. Debbie was great, um, got very few errors in our data that we had to correct, so it went very smoothly, and had everything done within less than two days, basically. And I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy.
Thank you. Did I miss any administration? I don't think I did. Moving on to, uh, board, so board comments? Let's decide once and start first, starting over here. Any comments?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to, um, say thank you to everybody for, um, being so gracious and welcoming, um, for the new members, myself, I mean, I'll speak to myself. Uh, so I do really appreciate that. I really look forward to serving, um, on this board and the community for the next four years, and, um, no, if there's any concerns, any questions, anything like that, I'd, you know, I'd be happy to answer those, like, for moving forward. I just, I'm really looking forward to working with everybody in a collaborative fashion, um, for the benefit of the district and the community, so thank you and happy holidays.
I'd say welcome again to new board members, and we try and, we, uh, probably can all work together, new senior board, and happy holidays, everybody.
Jump on the bus, okay? Congratulations to all the new board members. I am honestly very, very happy to see you to you and to work with you, um, in the upcoming year or two. Um, great to see the student council, so glad to see them here this, this time. Um, congratulations to the soccer team and happy holidays to everybody.
You ready? Congrats to John and Sally, Anthony on your roles, or your previous roles. Um, you know, I, I am looking forward to working with everybody, and I do want to say thanks to Dr. Gross, um, and Debbie, and Debbie, for taking the time to help transition us into this role.
All right, we're jumping on this side.
Welcome to everyone. He's new, and congrats to you guys who are now gonna have different positions or in the same position. Um, I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Siewa for the trading cards, my kids were so excited to have Kiko the dog on his training card, and to tell me what his favorite, uh, cartoon character was, which is Kiko, for those of you who are curious, that I was. Um, so thanks for doing something kind of different for the kids, I'd be heated.
I just want to say thanks to everybody here. It made everybody feel welcome, and of course, the work with everybody for the next four years. Merry Christmas. Uh, welcome to the new board members. Congratulations to our new officers. Uh, a lot of big things going on, but it's great news for the bond refinance, and your schedule, we were gonna get a whole lot of savings, and it's gonna have to be a lot more. Always good news to save money. Uh, just the, our girl soccer team, three years, that's, that's pretty impressive. State champion in three years, that's very, very impressive. It's a lot of, they're announced at the end of the year. Other than that. Yeah. Their TC, I was actually at the, a couple weeks, it's a, an interesting competition to watch, to, to see, to see how that actually works. It's, we get a chance that, uh, this particular one that's right over at Pine Richland, our kids doing Pine Richland, we have a, about, I think about half of the Hilton Bar and Bar students, it's a pretty good representation.
Um, I would like to thank my family and my friends and my community for their overwhelming support. I look forward to the role. I look forward to joining Kevin and the Penn Foundation. Um, I'm still gonna be involved in the PTO. I will continue out till the end of the year. I would like to thank that all parent volunteers in the PTO. Uh, we do a lot for the Houston Six Schools. Right now, we're doing, um, the holiday shops. We already did primary, center, elementary. Our, well, elementary will be coming next week. The classroom parties, we get to thank the parents. I mean, without them, it couldn't be possible, and we want to try to have as many fun activities for our students, especially now more than ever, so thank you again, and Merry Christmas to everyone, and Happy New Year.
Congratulations all for being here. Um, it sounds all fun and games, but it's, it's gonna be a lot of work, so, so get your work hats on. It's, it's, it's gonna be a long, you know, six months, the next six months of the meeting. We did allow family and friends for the new, um, board members in this evening, so that's why there is some people in our audience. Um, but I'd like to have next month's agenda to have a discussion about how we're gonna operate meetings, um, for the coming year, so, um, if we can get that on the agenda for next month, if we want to have an in-person, Zoom, or a combination of both. Um, but I think that's something we have to decide in the next meeting, so we can move forward for 2022. So if we can get that on the agenda for next month, I appreciate that. Um, other than that, um, I wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Years, and I get a motion to adjourn the meeting, fine?
Megan, so moved.
Kevin, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.